Well, good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the July 24th, 2025 Clackamas Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Andrew Jiraki. Interim County Counsel, Billy Williams. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Helm.
Present.
Commissioner West.
Present.
Chair Roberts.
Present. All right, would you please stand, join me in the Pledgeable Agents?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Right, again, good morning. And first item today is public communication. Our testimony is limited to three minutes. I ask that comments be respectful and courteous. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as a part of the public record. I will now open the meeting to general public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Clerk, would you please moderate this in-person and virtual testimony for us?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. If you're attending this meeting in person and would like to speak during public communication, this is a reminder to please fill out the blue card that can be found by the box at the center doors and deposit in the box there. I've received one blue card, Mr. Jason Ellerby. Please come forward and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jason Ellerby. I'm a lifelong Clackamas County resident. I live in Oak Grove, and I would like to talk about the two new libraries, the Gladstone one and the Oak Grove Library that's scheduled to open up next month. I'm very happy this project has gone forward. And I spoke about kind of a similar issue at a meeting, I believe it was in mid-October, in regards to the hours of these libraries. On Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, these libraries used to be open until 8:00, and now they're only open until 7:00. Me personally, work or other things going on, they now close at 7:00. And I realize there's also two new board members since the last time I talked. I was wondering if you guys could give any additional consideration to having these libraries open a little bit longer on those days.
All right. Since we have one testimony today, Commissioner West, I'll go ahead and make an exception here.
Thank you for testifying again, and you bring up a concern I've heard about many times. I do believe, do we have Saturday? I don't know the hours off the top of my head, so you are going to be more well-informed on this one for me. Do we also have Saturday hours?
Saturday, the library is open 10 to 6:00.
10 to 6:00. So I know that not all of our libraries can even be open on Saturdays at all, and it comes down to some budget constraints that we have to deal with and the realities around that and staffing issues. I'm not sure, Gary, who makes that decision on how hours are kind of worked out. Are you able to, is it, are you able to take advantage of the Saturday hours?
Well, sometimes, but those, in the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday there, when it was open till 8:00, that was great.
It was much better for you? Yeah, I don't know, like, how, I don't know if we can speak, Gary, if you have any insight on how this.
I do. I am responsible for all facilities of the county, including libraries. I ultimately set the hours after recommendations from staff. I informed you why I made this decision a few months ago, and it was for budget reasons. And we did do surveys of, or we tracked usage of the libraries, and there was really not that much usage after 7:00 PM on the weeknights. But it's really for budget constraints, so certainly I'm happy to reconsider that, but it was for budget purposes, and it's ultimately my decision unless you overrule my decision. Thank you.
Great. One quick question. Do we ever see where maybe not Monday through Friday, where to 8:00, but one or two days a week, we're able to be till 8:00? Is there a compromise there?
It's possible. Again, we looked at usage, if he was actually using both libraries, and there was not a lot of usage after 7:00 PM any night.
Any night.
We can consider it, reconsider it, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask, how was that determined about the usage? Because, you know, I would often be in there between 7:00 and 8:00, and I would be using the computer. Like, I personally don't have a computer with a printer, and there would be people coming and going.
Right. It was tracked over many months, and it's literally, staff was tallying, people would walk in the door and walk out the door.
Right. So I will, Commissioner Savis and Schrader both had a quick comment, so.
Yeah, well, thanks, Jason, for showing up, and thanks for being a patron of the library. That's great. I just want to correct one thing, is that the Oak Lodge Library will be closing next month for the shift from the existing location to the new location, but it won't be open until, I was told, October?
Early October, correct.
Yeah, early October. So there's going to be a pause in there where there's going to be, you know, you're not going to have any access other than the Gladstone Library, or the Leeding Library in Milwaukee, or any other library of your choice, frankly, but just in that interim, I want to make you aware that, of that. And as it relates to the hours, you know, there, as costs go up and the library funds are on a fixed tax rate, the costs are outpacing that revenue at that rate. So we are currently working on, with the library task force, to look at how we can try to bring a minimum level of standard of hours and increased services, which might mean either recalibrating the library coverage areas, or looking at a different rate or whatnot. Ultimately, the latter would require voter approval, but that's not going to happen anytime soon, but we're working on it. Matter of fact, yesterday was a meeting, the series of task force meetings at the board. So we're looking for a solution, but right now, less dollars unfortunately means less hours somewhere.
All right.
But, you know, we can always take a look at what the activity is, you know, when and where it is. Canby, for example, there's no evening hours and there's no weekends, so they're probably the, I'll say the exception, but they have the least amount of service right now because of financial constraints, and that's their call. The county can, the county right now only operates the, you know, really the Gladstone Library and the Oak Lodge Library, and the cities operate their own libraries and with their own hours.
Commissioner Schrader had a comment.
Yeah, thanks for coming today. Just to follow up on Paul said, yeah, it's actually funding constraints because it's a set tax rate. And years ago, back in 2008, when we did this district, I was working with all the librarians and folks like you, because we knew that we needed to do a district where we could really equalize to the best of our ability services across the county, and have the model where we do the computer, the big countywide computer piece link, okay? That's all the function the county directly has in library services in conjunction with all, and then feed it into all our libraries across the county. And for example, I lived in Canby for years, and in the, at the time I lived there, one of the reasons I got involved ironically was because they had a library in the basement of a retail building. So I was on the library board for years, and we consistently moved that library, you know, eventually to, you know, they eventually actually built a new library. I wasn't there for the new library, but we kept finding different spaces, expanding services, so on and so forth. So it's really worrisome to me that the town I worked in for so long to get library service is now constrained, where not having a library open on a weekend is pretty, that's pretty bad. I mean, that's when the story chimes, the kids, the moms, everybody, that's, that's pretty important. So my suggestion is going to be that I know that Paul's working with a group of folks, a district advisory committee, right? Paul, what do they call it?
Library Task Force.
Library Task Force. I'm kind of, I'm keeping track of that, but my hope is that they will come up with a plan to look at the rate that we have and suggest that we look at our district and see if people would be willing to raise the millage rate so we can get more dollars directly to you. And that's going to be a tough sell, because this is a tax-averse county, and everybody knows that. But in my, in my past life, when it came to libraries across the board, everybody was like, yep, because it's such a public service, it's such, it's usually the heart of the community, so it's a good sell. So I'm hopeful that if you want to have more library hours, that you could maybe sign up to help when and if we get to that point where we're going to ask the voters to give more dollars so we can have it open at night and have it open at the weekend and have the programming we need. And the other dynamic is how much the cities contribute to it. For example, Lake Oswego has their library, a big chunk of their library budget, of their budget is libraries, because, and they do, you know, Lake Oswego Reads, and they do most of their programming, and it's vital, but some of our more rural cities don't have that same capacity. So our other objective would be, how do we help them? You know, and how do we work with our cities to let them know that this should be, you know, you know, we can't manage their budget, but how can we help them know that that's a primary function that's going to help their communities grow and be, and be vibrant and be healthy? So I talked a lot, so I apologize, but.
No, no. Fine, fine.
But I want your name and number, because if we do this, you're going to be number one.
Okay, I wrote it on the card there, but.
Thank you so much for testimony.
Can I make any further comment on that?
Yeah, we do need to move on, but go ahead and make a quick statement.
Okay, like, for example, the tax rate for this bond measure, you know, goes up 3% every year due to assessed values, so we are getting 3% more.
You are, you're right.
Every year, and the likelihood of a bond measure, even if it was five cents per thousand being for additional library hours going before the public, I mean, that ain't going to pass.
Well, just, just wait and see. They said, they said that before, and, you know, when we talk, when we got libraries and we got out there, people like thumbs up, so, but I'm an eternal optimist, so.
All right, thank you for coming, and.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Turn to Andrew, is there anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've received no other blue cards, those wish to comment in person today. This is a final call. If you are attending this meeting in person, wish to comment during public communication, this is your opportunity to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box by the Mr. Chair, seeing no other members of the public who wish to comment in person today, and seeing no members of the public attending virtually today, I see no one else who wishes to comment today.
All right, thank you. I will now close the general public communication portion, we'll move on, and Gary, what do you have next?
Next is the consent agenda. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Item A, elected officials. One, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Two, approval of a grant memorandum agreement with the Oregon Idaho High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for inter-agency task force law enforcement services. Grant value is $169,460 for one year. Funding is through the Office of National Drug Control Policy. No county general funds are involved. B, county administration. One, approval of a change order with Clackamas Progress Partners for final reconciliation of sensor testing, paint, and other courthouse improvements. Change order value is a credit to the county of $70,019.46. Total design-build portion of the project agreement is $230,107,910.50, of which 50% was paid by state-matching funds. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. C, juvenile. One, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for juvenile crime prevention and diversion services. Agreement value is $21,161,383 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for psychological evaluations, therapy, and other youth-specific services. Agreement value is $82,094 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. D, transportation and development. One, approval of a grant application to Metro for development of the annual waste reduction and recycle at work program plan. Grant value is $661,149. Funding is through Metro. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an amendment to a contract with Eagle Elsner for the South Ivy Street pedestrian intersection improvements project. Amendment value is $441,131.38 for 15 days. Total contract value is $499,131.38 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation, City of Canby, and County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Three, ratification of a loan application to Business Oregon for the County Fair and Event Center multi-use building project. Application value is $2500,000. Funding is through Business Oregon. No county general funds are involved. E, health, housing, and human services. One, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sandy for unanticipated vehicle repairs to the Mount Hood Express. Amendment value is $100,000 for 11 months. Total agreement value is $241,435 for 11 months. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Palma County for point-and-time count coordination. Agreement value is $104,949 for 14 months. Funding is through the Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of an amendment to a healthcare services contract with Care Oregon for the 23-Hour Stabilization Center. Amendment value is one year. Total contract value is $3100,000 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of a personal services contract with Greater New Hope Family Services for continuation of culturally-specific case management services. Contract value is $653,207.10 for one year. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Five, approval of a master grant agreement with Oregon Housing and Community Services for homelessness prevention programs. Agreement value is $14,077,354.55 for two years. Funding is through Oregon Housing and Community Services and $536,541 of budgeted county general funds. Six, approval of an amendment to a subrecipient agreement with Ant Farm for architectural and design services at the Malala Resource Center. Amendment value is $30,850 for one year. Total agreement value is $766,650 for 18 months. Funding is through Oregon Senate Bill 5511 funds. No county general funds are involved. Seven, approval of an amendment to a personal services contract with Impact Northwest for the continuation of housing assistance and supportive services. Amendment value is $951,244.06 for one year. Total contract value is $3604,294.28 for four years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Eight, approval of a weatherization services contract with Gale Contractor Services to weatherize and reduce energy costs for low-income homes. Contract value is $150,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Nine, approval of a weatherization services contract with Good Energy retrofit to weatherize and reduce energy costs for low-income homes. Contract value is $150,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Ten, approval of a weatherization services contract with Home Energy Sciences to weatherize and reduce energy costs for low-income homes. Contract value is $150,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Eleven, approval of a weatherization services contract with Performance Insulation Energy Services to weatherize and reduce energy costs for low-income homes. Contract value is $150,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Twelve, approval of a provider agreement with Trillium Community Health Plan for rent and utility assistance, home modifications, and other Medicaid reimbursement-eligible services to Clackamas County residents. Agreement value is approximately $45,000 for 26 months. Funding is through federal Medicaid demonstration waiver funds. No county general funds are involved. Thirteen, approval of a personal services contract with Jackson and Coker Locum Tenens to provide as-needed medical, dental, and psychiatric providers. Contract value is $500,000 for five years. Funding is through health centers' fees for services. No county general funds are involved. Fourteen, approval of change order to a public improvement contract with Pacific Sun Construction for drainage improvements to divert standing water at the Haven House. Change order value is $49,925.50 for two months. Total contract value is $971,710.18 for 13 months. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Board of Commissioners consent agenda.
Again, nice job. Thank you, and I'll turn to my colleagues if they wish to remove any item from the consent agenda. Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
Right, Commissioner West has moved to approve the consent agenda as read. Commissioner Schrader, a second, and any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gary, what is next?
Next is county administrator update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our employees and programs for you and the public to hear about, and today I would like to thank and recognize the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Team for their work on maintaining the Trolley Trail, and a member of the public wrote this note in. "I am a daily walker on the Trolley Trail. The Trolley Trail is always busy with families, youth, seniors, who are bike-riding, running, and walking. This asset is an important feature of both the local and larger metro area. The Trolley Trail maintenance crew is constantly providing exceptional maintenance to the areas around the trail, keeping it clean and clear from overgrowth or other impairments from trail use. Please extend kudos for my local community, as well as other Trolley Trail users, for the hard and sometimes thankless services that these employees provide. Their efforts are appreciated and most certainly noticed." Thank you to our crew on the Trolley Trail and those team members of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District who make that happen for all of our park facilities. Next, Clackamas Water Environment Services received a tremendous honor this past week. They received the 2025 Outstanding Member Agency Award by the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies. This recognition is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our West staff. The award specifically highlights the Tri-City Outfall Project, which showcases what can be done through long-term vision, community partnerships, and technical excellence. This is the second time Water Environment Services received this state award. The last time was in 2019 for the Carley Creek Project. So thank you to Director Greg Geist and all the team at Water Environment Services for their outstanding work, but wait, there's more. Recently, the staff of West gave a tour to the Gladstone City Council for the Gladstone Pump Station. The city administrator, Jackie Betts, wrote a note to the councilors in their weekly email, which she shared with us, and I want to share this, what Jackie wrote. "Thank you to the incredible staff at West for hosting Gladstone's elected officials on a tour of the upgraded Gladstone Pump Station last week. The visit was a great opportunity to learn about the impressive improvements to the wastewater system and celebrate this important milestone for our community. The City of Gladstone is proud of its longstanding and collaborative partnership with West, a unique relationship rooted in innovation, mutual support, and shared commitment to public service. Together, we continue to enhance infrastructure and protect our local environment, setting a strong example of what public partnerships can accomplish." Thank you, Jackie, for that very kind note, and it is true, there was a time when West had very poor relationships with our cities, and that is no longer the case. Thanks again to our staff and the leadership and the members of the Water Environment Services Advisory Committee, with Commissioner Helm, you chaired at one point, and you, Commissioners as the board of that West. So thank you to all involved for the great work that you do for West and our community. That was my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you, Gary. And now it's the time for Commissioner Communication, and I will start to my right with Commissioner Schrader.
I'll try not to talk too much, but I do have a few things I wanted to mention. First of all, our new commissioner, Commissioner Helm, got a shout-out from the Hoodland CPO the other day, because you've been visiting community planning organizations, and they really appreciated it. And I mentioned it because it's one of the first things they said in their letter to us when we had a meeting with all of the community leaders. Gosh, what day was it? I lose track of time. We all know that. Tuesday night, yeah, today's Thursday, okay. But in any case, what I was really impressed by, and I wanted to mention, up in Hoodland, they have an emergency communication network, general mobile radio service, and this is fantastic. They basically, as a, as a group that were in the Mount Hood Corridor, they've actually prepared an emergency communication information system out to residents. They're receiving information from other GMRS radio users and ham radio operators who can communicate back and forth with county emergency services. I think this is fantastic, because a lot of things we're told in emergency management, and Craig really is the expert in this, but I'm part of the emergency, the regional emergency management folks, so I hear stuff, is that when something like this happens, right? Good, you're nodding your head, I love that. That really, we will be depending on our emergency folks, our firefighters, our sheriff's office, the county, but a lot of times, some of that first response, you're going to be in your local community, probably cut off, and the only thing you're going to have is your friends and neighbors close by.
And that was all privately funded by the citizens up there.
Exactly, exactly. I, and I'm not going to say much more, because I think you should talk about it, too, but wow, wouldn't this be great? I was going to maybe work with Diana, see if we can talk to our emergency manager, Daniel, he must know about it, but why can't.
They were all together last night, another CPO meeting, too. I'll talk about that, too.
Okay, good, 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 good. So, oh, the, our emergency folks were, well, you're on top of it. Wow, okay, enough of the emergency management then from Martha. The other thing I've been working on is, we just went, you and I went to the Philadelphia Conference, okay? It was, was quite a great conference, but one of the things I brought back with me, and I always bring a stack of material to share with my colleagues, and this is the county landscape project, a primer of our history, definition, structures, and authorities. And the reason, it's quite the, quite the book, quite the pamphlet. And one of the reasons I'm extremely interested in this is that because usually the electorate doesn't really know what counties do as a level of government, and this really looks at counties, not just our county, but counties across the United States of America. So as many of you know, I was a school teacher and still have a current certificate, and I've been working with the County-to-County Empowering Future Leaders Program with the Women of NACO. So I am developing, I've actually got a couple of drafts of a curriculum I'd like Gary and the rest of you to look at, curriculum for kids based on some of this literature and also readings like Democracy of America, that I'd like to pull together and work with our school districts to get some of these, our young people in, in high school, involved in getting knowledgeable about county government and maybe even getting some school credits. I've been working on that. But the whole end game is this. February 22nd through 24th, 2026, in Washington, DC, there's going to be a Commissioner supporting youth leadership, 10 to 12 grade. It's going to be, youth create a present and present a national policy resolution. They'll be touring national landmarks, Smithsonian Institutions, the White House, the US Capitol Building, and they will be meeting with congressional leaders to discuss issues impacting local communities and advocate for youth-driven policy change. So they are asking us to sponsor a youth leader. Now, I know that we don't, we don't have extra funding, that's not what I'm asking for, for that, but I would like to identify kids out there in their communities and see if parents and school districts might be interested in this, and I'd be willing to coordinate a whole TG curriculum prior to them visiting that. So it's something I'm excited about, because you just, you can take the teacher out of the classroom, but you're always a teacher, no matter what, no matter how long you've done it. And in any case, I could talk longer, but I better stop, so, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, real quickly, before I get into what I wanted to chat about today, I just wanted to do, missing the Trolley Trail, Gary, I want to say to my colleagues, make you aware of that, the Trolley Trail is the highest-used trail in Clackamas County bar none. It's more than, it's more than double the last time we did a count. I also want to just do a shout-out to the Sheriff's Office for helping, because sometimes they need the Sheriff's Office help to take care of issues along the way, to keep the trail safe for everyone. So shout-out to both NCPRD staff and to the Sheriff's Office. It is widely used, and I'm sure even Jason's walked on it a couple of times, because I know he's a walker. So. know he's a walker. So, anyhow, shifting, I've been reflecting quite a bit the last week here with regards to the retreat, the C4 Retreat coming up both tomorrow and Saturday. And so, Martha knows this probably better than anyone, but before I met Martha, and when I first got involved in local government in 1997, I became aware of governments fighting governments. And I thought, you know, as a business person, I go, God, this seems absurd. I thought government was this fine, well-oiled machine, and people, government especially had a responsibility to work together. And, you know, and I came from a business environment, well, most of the time, your businesses work together pretty well, and chambers of commerce and things like that. And every now and the end, there might be a business that might have a feud with a competitor. But for the most part, I was stunned to learn, as the years went by, that the disagreements amongst governments were higher than my experience in the small business world, especially in Clackamas County. So, with that said, as I got more involved, I got actually frankly more disgusted. And ended up being part, as I got on the Water District a few years later, you know, there were disagreements there, there were agreements that were poorly written, and we've been cleaning things up. I think I've been trying to be part of cleaning things up for years. So, it's all about, you know, in the year 2000, 2001, it was recognized by the county commissioners back then, well before I was a county commissioner, that coordination and cooperation is what making Washington County highly successful. What should we do? What could we do to emulate that level of cooperation? And Washington County had started with their coordinating committee many years prior. And so, we start working at it, and in 2001, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee was official. Our bylaws were crafted and we painted. And as Martha remembers, as the years went by, sometimes it was a place to fight, sometimes it was a place to argue, but we worked things out, you know? There's ebbs and flows of the personalities, obviously, and the issues as they go along. But the principles of coordination, collaboration, and cooperation are part of the key of what C4 is all about, trying to work with our cities and with our districts and with our citizens to make our governments work together better and to serve the public, really, that's what it really revolves about. Well, in these times, you know, and the challenges we face, which are more severe and difficult than ever, I think the call to coordination, collaboration, and cooperation is a higher call to duty than ever before. So, I asked my colleagues to remember that. Martha, I don't have to remind you of that because I know you know it well. But for those of you who know, you know, and when it comes to, you know, being in the room for, you know, two days with our colleagues, that to try to maintain a calm, collective, cooperative spirit in that whole thing. And as I say, often, the theme of teamwork, or the theme of team, is something that we continue to strive for, and our citizens in this county deserve nothing less than that. So, with that, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Chair. Want to thank all of our employees. We have an employee picnic this afternoon. West, congratulations, also on your award. That's really exciting. I think I saw you hold up a pretty piece of glass. There it is. Yeah. It looks a little sharp, but it's pretty. So, congratulations on that good work, West, and thank you for your collaborative work with the city of Gladstone. That's a great rapport. We have really tried to have great relationships with all of our cities here in Clackamas County and find ways to be effective and collaborate for important local issues in very pragmatic ways. And so, I really appreciate, West, you guys being a part of that. And we do have the employee luncheon gathering this afternoon. I look forward to congratulating everybody for their hard work, appreciating them, and also just having a minute of downtime and hanging out with one another as a team and a community. So, Gary, thank you for putting that on. Quick update on SHS. Today, I'm going to be interviewed by, we're not allowed to call it an audit because the elected auditors get upset when we do that because it's like we're in their territory. I know. But we have, one of the things that came, I see Chair Robert smiling, and that's exactly what I'm talking about. Out of the last task force that just finished with the President's Task Force, Lynn Peterson, where I co-chaired, one of the big things that came up was we kind of at our, we spearheaded this as a county, is we wanted greater transparency, and we wanted some type of performance. We're allowed to call it a review. So, today, that team that wants to understand the scope of what that may look like is coming to interview me. Once again, we also said, hey, if we don't like how Metro's doing it, we may have a different standard here in Clackamas to have something more robust in how we look at our performance audit, and we can call it an audit in Clackamas County. Right now, I think we're going down the two parallel paths to do the best we can with the region and what we could come to, which I think is pretty watered down and isn't sufficient enough, but we'll go through that process on the SHS funding. But I do, I'm also going to be meeting with our departments about our scope moving forward as a county to be a little bit more intentional and purposeful in trying to build that voter trust back up and the public trust with supportive housing services, tax dollars, and our systems that we've built. So, that's coming around the corner. I look forward to hearing how C4 goes. I will not be there this weekend. I had a prior commitment that conflicted, so I won't be able to make it up to the mountain with you guys, but I look forward to hearing how that goes. And I find those to be very productive weekends and retreats, and I am saddened that I won't be able to make it this year. And with that, Chair, I will yield back.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Helm?
Thank you, Chair. We've had a crazy, busy week this last week. I'm still meeting with various department heads throughout the county. I met with Sheriff Angela Brandonberg yesterday, was updated on all the great things our sheriff's department does. Met with the Economic Development, Tourism, and Transportation Divisions. This week, the BCC did our committee assignments, and silly me, I signed up for a couple more things in addition to all our regular meetings, but I'm looking forward to attending some of these things that are very critical in our county. I attended my first IMPACT meeting last night. I had to cut out a little short because I was on my way to the Beaver Creek CPO meeting. We had our community leaders meeting on Tuesday evening. It was well-attended, and I got some really good feedback on it last night, too, which was really good. I went to the Hoodland CPO meeting last Thursday, and it was, I think one of the reasons they wrote a note was because I thought it was, I was just going to be there and observing, but it was, I kind of walked into a hornet's nest. But I am not a newbie to contention in the room, as you all know, so it wasn't a surprise. But I love, and one of the comments I made for the half of the room that was upset and angry, is I love that they were there, and I love that they were engaged. And, you know, oftentimes, it takes someone to be passionate about their, where they stand on something, to come in and give their voice to it. So, I said, come back, come back to more meetings, because this is just the beginning of a process that is going to take a while for this new walk-bike path they're trying to work on up there. Pat Erdenberger did a great job chairing the meeting. She's a sweetheart. I invited Pat to the Beaver Creek CPO meeting last night because Daniel Nybauer was giving a presentation on disaster management. So, it gave, yeah, so I was trying to connect the dots there because the Hoodland CPO has done such a fabulous job of coordinating their citizens with these 40 GMRS radios and four repeaters, and they're trying to get like 20-some more radios out to their citizens. And again, this is all privately funded. They feel so strongly about this, as they well should, being where they live, that they need to have some sort of coordination of services. But what they need help with, and this is where I'm hoping we can jump in, is with the coordination, and Pat says, I can't do everything, I can't guide everyone, but if we can put them in their own little areas, and then those people that have the radios can communicate back and forth with other areas, it's going to, oh, it's going to save lives, is what it's going to do. So, they were sharing that with the Beaver Creek CPO people, Hamlet, you know, this is a Hamlet slash CPO. That had me totally confused. So, somebody's going to have to school me on that later. Because I had people arguing with me after the meeting, so I'm like, oh, let me get back to you on that. Anyway, it's great because these people that are closer to the mountain, or anywhere in Clackamas County that are in wildfire-prone areas, we need to have more of this. And Daniel's on it. He gave a great presentation. And it's, and there was another great presentation. The second one was Carla Hogan has started what's called the Oregon Livestock Council. And due to the 2020 fires, people did not know what to do or how to get their livestock to a safe place. This is, I was blown away by the amount of work she has done. She has complete notebooks of her horses' names, and she's got one in the barn, one in her house, one in the trailer. They have these Velcro bands that can go around your livestock's necks with your information on it. It was just a very well-done presentation. It's not quite up and running. She says it'll be 2026 before it's live, but if anyone wants to get ahold of her, she is, she's done a fabulous job of not just horses, but any type of animal. Because as we know, people, especially elderly people, were staying in their homes because they had no way to get their animals out, and they were not going to leave their animals alone. So, it's another network reach-out program for them to work with their community. And that's what this is all about, is community. So, I'm just still drinking from the fire hose, loving it. I will go to the picnic today, too, and Todd, I see is back there showing us his, everybody's there showing us their awards, which is wonderful, too. So, I think that is it. Chair, I will yield back to you now.
All right. Thank you. Great information. Just a few comments, and I wanted to kick it off by kind of following my colleagues. Big congratulations to West for their amazing work. I actually had a, this week, I met with Greg Geist, and I will say he was bragging about my colleague to the left, saying that she knows so much about West, she is the go-to person. So, he gave me quite a background on her long history of working with West. It was very nice compliments. I wanted to say, we had a tourism meeting yesterday. It was great to hear the tourism in Clackamas County, Oregon, and what's impacting it, and different things that we're really trying to do to stimulate people visiting Clackamas County and Oregon. And it was very informative, very much appreciated it. Following a little bit on my colleagues here, it is employee picnic today, and I just want to echo thanks to all the employees for their incredible work. We have so many wonderful employees that go above and beyond every day, and just that we appreciate the hard work that they do. The one thing I always like to talk about when I make mistakes, because hopefully it's lessons for others. So, this was a personal mistake I made at home on my day off. I was sanding some stuff and putting some stain on this piece of wood that I was working on, and thought, okay, these rags, I probably shouldn't leave them inside, so I took them outside. I made one mistake. I put it out in a gravel area and left it, but I was going to come back to it later. And I put it in a bucket, and I came back and it was gone. The whole bucket and everything had burned up. So, I was very lucky I didn't leave it in my building. The mistake I made is I didn't put water in the bucket. So, just food for thought for those that are staining or doing woodworking stuff, you know, it is flammable, it ignited on itself, and I was like, wow. I was really glad I took it outside. I probably just should have put it in a bucket of water, which is some of the directions that I will now follow. So, I wanted to say that I was very lucky. So, the other thing I wanted to announce is, just encourage you to mark your calendars for National Night Out. It's Tuesday, August 5th, just around the corner. And National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police, community partnerships, and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, a more caring place to live. And National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. And further, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighborhoods together under positive circumstances. So, millions of neighbors take part in this. It's in every state across the United States. There's literally hundreds and hundreds of groups that do that. And in our county, we have them basically in every city. So, I just encourage you to look at your particular city, just kind of see where it's at. So, a wonderful chance to kind of come together.
The CPOs are having them, too?
Yes.
Yeah, the CPOs are having them, too.
So, it's a, it is a great networking opportunity to meet your local police and community. So, and the very last thing I had, just real quickly, is just want to turn to my colleagues and say thank you very much for all the hard work on the strategic plan. All the input that everybody gave was incredible. Thank Gary and staff for all the prep work, and Marvin, Jeremy with MFR for making that happen. And as I was talking to Gary, I was talking about another project, and it reminded me myself, it's like, okay, but this isn't the priority as the strategic plan is. So, I said, this might be down the road. So, it was a personal good reminder, as like, not adding a bunch to Gary's list. So, with that, if any of my colleagues don't have any other comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn today's meeting. Thank you for joining us.